...bit behind, he's gonna be here in a few minutes. So for the City Council Finance and Housing Power Authority Meeting, City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
City Council Authority Members Crist-
President.
Johnson-
Here.
Mann-
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith-
Here.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
I'll turn it over to Chairman Chris for the Redevelopment Agency. Can we have the roll call, please?
Agency Directors Harvey-
Present.
Mann-
Present.
Zetto-
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith-
Here.
Chairman Crist-
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, now, at this time, if everybody could please stand, and would you, do we have Shane Idelman here?
Yep.
And-
Actually, Your Honor, I'm Chaplain Timothy Ullman-
Right.
-from the wing chaplain from the Air Base Wing, and Mrs. Bryan was gracious enough to allow me to pray tonight.
Very good, thank you very much.
We bow our heads for prayer. Almighty God, it has been said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." Tonight, we give you thanks for the dedicated and selfless service of the Lancaster City Council members who have found themselves in the service to the men, women, and families of Lancaster. Bless them and keep them in your, in this tremendous work they do on behalf of their fellow citizens. Bless them with your wisdom and understanding as they look to the future and prosperity of this city. Lord, it is a dawning task to set a positive vision and take positive actions amidst the many challenges put before this council. Guide these servants in their deliberations on the way forward regarding the redevelopment of Lancaster. Lead them to proactive and actionable solutions to build and grow Lancaster's neighborhoods and businesses. Bless their discussions on the master plan of the trails and bikeways, and grant them foresight to make sound decisions regarding energy issues for the people of Lancaster. Finally, loving Father, grant to all citizens of Lancaster your blessings for a prosperous new year. Keep them safe, free from fear, and filled with love for family, friends, and this community. May each man, woman, and child truly find themselves as they serve one another in this great city of Lancaster. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Remain standing for the flag ceremony. Can we introduce the people to do the flag ceremony? Could we have, we're gonna have tonight doing the, the flag ceremony, Ms. Junior Showdown Rodeo Queen Jamie Wells, and Ms. Showdown Rodeo Heather-
Luggergan.
Luggergan. I can't read, Marv's writing there. Thank you, ladies.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have the honor of having our Los Angeles County Assessor John Nogez here to, to talk with us, so we're very happy to have him here.
You're a nice assessor. And mayor and council member distinguished people, thank you so much for coming out to visit me. I have not received this type of an audience, I don't know when, and, and all for me? Alright, so maybe not all for me. But I, I thank you for allowing us to, first and foremost, say hello to you. I am your newly-elected assessor, I've been in office for just a little bit over a year, and prior to that, I was mayor and council member of the city of Huntington Park, where we, through various issues of dialogue, through the League of Cities, and the various divisions, have interacted for the good of our community. So, I really just wanted to come and say hello, and thank you for being part of our community here in Southern California, bring you a little bit of good news, but share also with you some of the deputies that are assigned to the Lancaster area, and ask for your assistance and the community's assistance, so that we can get the message out of what we do at the assessor's office. Oftentimes, people think that we're the tax collector. No, we're not the tax collector, and we're not the auditor. We want to establish fair values. And many of you realize that in Lancaster, as without, with, throughout the nation, we've all seen decline in values, and we want to address them together. With your assistance, I'm sure that you can direct me not only to your town hall meetings, your neighborhood watch meetings, but also the optimus, the rotary clubs. We need your assistance so that we can continue to get the message out there. I've met with the mayor over and over again, and he definitely wants me to address fair values, as the council does also, so that those people can continue to stay in their homes and be part of this wonderful community. With me tonight, and I'd like for my staff to stand, is Alcide Duramus, Robert Mraz, and Louis Reyes. This is part of the team of the 1,500 employees that we have at the county of Los Angeles, ready to come and speak to the organizations that you have for us. So, I wanted to introduce them to you, let them know that, let the community know, I don't know if you televise this, but if you don't, get the word out that we're here in the good times and the bad times. When the market comes down, yes, the decline in value requests are coming in fast and furious, and we do do an automated review. We've reviewed over 500,000 parcels in LA County, of which we've reduced 380,000 parcels. So, if in fact, we reviewed your parcel, but we didn't give you enough, and you think that the property should be lower, give us a call. We have a wonderful office here, we'd love to be able to have you come on in. But also, oftentimes, people don't understand what Proposition 13 is, and how wonderful it has been, so that you can at least have your property tax base understood. We have a path for that also. We have given each of the council members one of the brochures, that we're hoping that will enlighten you in terms of what the assessor's office does, so that you can better guide us in terms of who might need our services. Proposition 58 and 139 are the parent-to-child exclusions, and also from grandparent-to-grandchild exclusion. Oftentimes, we will reappraise a house 100% if the daughter got married and assumed the husband's name, which happens a lot. We don't know that that transaction was between parent and child in the passing unless you notify us, and there are strict guidelines for you to let us know on these things. If someone is severely and permanently disabled, and you have to build ramps, you have to lower the kitchen cabinets, you have to widen the doors, because you are now handicapped and need to go up in a wheelchair, all of the work, when you come to this wonderful city and take out your permit, that permit has a dollar value. And oftentimes, when we see new construction, and we don't know it's for disabled or to handicap your home, we will go ahead and reassess it and increase the value, when really, the state legislators have, in their infinite wisdom, said, "You know what? You don't want to tax those people that need the assistance the most." So please, these are all programs that we have for you. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you for the wonderful job that you've been doing, because you have stabilized. We've had a couple of three very, very bad years, very difficult years. We're not out of the complete problem yet of stabilization, but we're en route to a better community, a better vision that you have all put forward, and we wanted to thank you for that. With that, we are just one of the various departments that we have within the county, we're bringing you the citizens' guides, and I'm gonna leave this with the city clerk, because I started as a city clerk in the city of Huntington Park, and they usually are the people that keep all of the paperwork and documentation. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm here to answer. If not, you know where to get ahold of me for at least the next three years. So, with that, I hope that the community also sends the message out there that we're here to help, we're here to come to the various dialogues, whether it be at an optimus, a rotary, a church gathering, we're here for you, so.
John, you're one of the few people in the county that know we're here, let alone actually come and visit us.
Are you kidding? Wait, you have the greatest food up here, I'm always ready. Actually, we got here a little bit early, because you never know the traffic, and there I was, having my ice cream fix at Cold Stone's, and what do I see across the street? R. Rex Paris. We're driving down the street, on the corner, we're waiting at the light, what do I see? R.
Hey! They just keep putting them up.
Let us have an opportunity, sir! Thank you.
John, can I, can I ask you to give the location of your local offices, because we do televise it, and local phone numbers?
We do, and as a matter of fact, our local offices are willing and ready to come out here and visit with the various groups. If I can't make it, I love to do the community outreach programs, because I think people oftentimes say, "Our leaders don't come." We come, just invite us, we'd love to come out and visit with you. And the Lancaster Regional Office is at 251 East Avenue K6, Lancaster, California, beautiful Lancaster, California, and we're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can go home now.
We should give him an award, he's the first county official we haven't grilled. And he saw all your signs, too.
That's right.
Okay, you're gonna take the lead on this? Okay.
We're here today to honor several individuals and a couple of community queens for what they've done in the community. What they've done is they've taken a rodeo, and we have to go back several years. They had the old rodeo at the old fairgrounds, they did the PRCA rodeo at the old fairgrounds, they took it to Palmdale, they made it a little bit larger, they had the tamale festival with it, they, and they've become national. Well, what they've done is, they held, this year, they held the state finals at the Lancaster fairgrounds, I mean, Antelope Valley fairgrounds, and-
I was kidding.
And they've made it, and they've been invited back next year to hold the finals. So I would like to call up Johnny Z. Samaloff, Heather Luggergan, Jamie Wells, Sandy Travis, Tom Fuller, which is the, our top guy at the auto mall, Susan Grantman, and Michelle Lewis.
So come on up here.
I think we're without Sandy tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Johnny?
Thank you.
Heather?
Thanks for having us.
Hi, how are you? How'd that Palmdale thing work out for you?
Well, it was a part in a storm, you know? We got by, but we're glad to be back, glad to do the fairgrounds, and the city liked it.
John, you wanna say a few words?
Well, I'd certainly like to thank the mayor and Councilman Chris, but also the other members of the council, and City Manager Bozigan, and all the staff, working with the city and the fairgrounds. We just got started again, so we've got a lot of years coming in the future, and we hope that the combination will work well in the community. We were tickled to death, as Marvin said, to snag the California Circuit Finals Rodeo, which is like the World Series of California rodeo, and we pulled that off this year at the last minute. But next year, we've got it coming up in October, 19, 20, and 21. We'll probably do some other events, but thanks to the city, and thanks for having our girls here and our teams, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So can I ride a bull next time?
Absolutely. I bet you do.
One second.
You'll be on Facebook tonight, eh?
Marvin, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we, now of the anti-bullying program, but I'd like to bring Lori up to help me with this, because this is, this is the, of all the things we do in Lancaster, and as we do as a community of Antelope Valley, this is the one I love the most. And Lori is the one that, that came up with the idea, grew the program, made it happen, and as a result, has, is slowly but surely turning each one of our schools into safe havens for our kids. Schools aren't what they used to be because of Lori. Of everybody that I've met, the one who's had the most impact on the most lives is you. And I can't tell you how-
I know about that, but thank you very much.
Well, look what she did, let me tell you what she did. She took a school that, what was it, 40-some percent felt unsafe at least one day a week, and turned that into 4%, all in one year. I mean, there's only 4% of the kids at Del Sur, and I think it's probably gotten better now.
We have 5-1.
Really? And, and where was it? It was in the locker rooms. Close those locker rooms, let them stink, you know? But it was a remarkable achievement. Bullying is just no longer tolerated, and we're, we're hoping to make that citywide and then valleywide. Thank you. Okay. So we have a proclamation for the schools, we have Antelope Valley Union High School District, who has jumped on board with this, and David, you wanna bring whoever's coming? Oh, Danita's here, good.
[inaudible]
Yeah, come on, let's have a party.
[inaudible]
Oh, so that's why you're all here, okay, good.
That wasn't him.
I, I thought Marvin said something, and you know, made people mad again, you know, you know how he is. We have East Side Union School District, and who's representing them? Okay. Lancaster School District? Now, if you guys wanna get in the picture, you gotta get up and come on down, everybody's welcome for this. And finally, but not least, we have West Side Union School District, who was the one who started all of this with Lori. If I was David Vier, I'd make her a better offer. Okay. He did that, huh?
Yeah, I used to work for him.
Oh, okay. Okay, let me see if I can sort these out. East Side, where's East Side? Thank you. So is everybody else keeping stats on this in their schools? Yes, no? We surveying the kids of the other schools?
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna report next year what it is? Okay, wonderful. If we can't measure it, we can't, we can't improve it. Oh, here we go, this is David's? You know, Danita, when, we jumped on this, where is she? There you are. She jumped on this with both feet. I mean, it was, it was something that we didn't really have to, to lobby anybody, did we? As soon as they heard it, everybody just dove in, and it got bigger and bigger and bigger. We're doing something again at El Pac, is that right? Or are we?
Not sure, we thought we could-
Oh!
Right from the funeral scene, and then we're doing something a little bit.
Okay. Thank you for helping us fight this war, okay? Oh, and we have a video to show, okay, great. It's, it's about 45 minutes, for those who, no, it's nine minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Someone turn the audio down, we will be back. Turn the lights?
Uh, we're gonna have to turn, someone turn the audio down, turn it back up, it'll take a moment if you want to.
Well, we just all stare at each other, that-
Eighteen minutes of the agents.
Oh, I can turn that over, can I? What, what happened to my?
Fix.
That wasn't funny. You good? Okay, let's go. K-61063, coming up next, "Not in Our Town." Man, you're gonna wanna hear this in Antelope Valley.
In 20 schools across the Antelope Valley in California, 35,000 students came together to address the devastation caused by bullying.
There's something that's going on, there's a trend that's happening, kids getting bullied, and then kids committing suicide. This is really serious, the solution is happening in town, tell us about your perspective.
Well, the first thing we're doing is trying to raise awareness and help the bullying is-
Lori Masari, a local middle school counselor, started an anti-bullying program at her school, then spread the word to the entire community.
Too many of us are not stepping up for others, we're being bystanders when we really need to be activists.
Ease up, ease up, ease up, ease up.
Our intent is to bring together the school districts, along with community leaders, business leaders, to try and, as a community, say, "This is just plain not acceptable behavior."
We had two suicides that happened within 50 miles of our school and our town. When something like this happens so close to your own community, it's a wake-up call, and you realize that this could happen to any one of us, and we've gotta do something a little bit more, because apparently what we're doing isn't working, isn't enough.
Suicide is a rare reaction to bullying, but it has opened an urgent debate about the role school leaders play in keeping students safe. This district launched an anti-bullying program, and students took the lead in setting up activities during the Week of Action.
Today, here at Lancaster High School, we invited students to come on up on the stage and go ahead and sign this pledge, to say that, you know, we're, we're done with all this bullying, and we're really trying to make a change.
To help them understand the deep harm caused by bullying, the students read personal stories about kids who were tormented by their classmates.
There's this one where, it was this football player, his name was Jeremiah, my name is Jeremiah, and he was a big dude, and just 'cause he was a little bit slower at learning than everybody else, they picked on him and bullied him, and I'm a little bit slower at learning than everybody else, so I kinda know what, what he was going through, 'cause I used to be bullied for that, so, yeah. I used to have a gay friend in fifth grade, and he used to get teased a lot, and that kinda like, you know, struck me, because he got teased too much.
Like, some people will say, "Oh, that chick's really ugly," and you take it, and you think that's real, that you really are ugly, you, it's horrible.
I was the bullied, um, in fifth grade. I had a lot of trouble that year, my grades weren't that great, I just couldn't stand it, I didn't enjoy my life, I hated it, I didn't wanna, I felt like I didn't, I didn't even wanna be here, I didn't wanna be in this world.
As a counselor, I'm the person who has to look into the eyes of a child who comes in and is afraid to come to school. I'm the person who the mothers will call and say, "Can you help me get my child out of the car, he's afraid to come to school." You can't work with children on a day-to-day basis like this and see their fear and not be compelled to do something about it.
How many of you feel that people bully because they're lower and they're trying to bring themselves up? Any of you see the bully that way?
I am not the typical bully. Most people threaten, push, I guess, I technically just bring people down, like, their feelings.
Okay. Have any of your lives, or your, your existence at school, has it changed since we started doing this?
The phrase "not in our, not in our school" means a lot more now, 'cause sometimes people will be like bullying some other people, and the people around them will be like, "Not in our school, and not in our school," and they'll just be like, "What?" And then they'll stop.
Yeah.
The phrase has really helped out a lot.
Yeah, the phrase stopped, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Going into this program, it changed me, it made me stronger mentally. Now I know how to handle bullying, and I know how to handle it when someone's getting bullied, and how to deal with the person, how to tell him to stop, and go tell somebody about it.
We emphasize the impact of peer power versus peer pressure. You have a power and an impact on other students, but if you use it positively, you can have a tremendous impact in the community.
Vincent became a leader. He and his classmates took their mission to a local elementary school, where they did role-playing with the students.
You're a loser, you don't have any friends.
Hey, you're still the one who stopped bullying, you need, you need stopping me.
Good job, that was good.
The students also helped educate their own teachers about where bullying takes place and what to do about it.
There's not a lot everywhere, but the most there is, is the locker rooms and on the field.
Can you give us an example of what you would like to say from the teachers?
If like, Miss Hager and Mr. Eldrick, you guys could try to walk through, and then if you see something wrong, just stop it right away.
Prior to the implementation of the anti-bullying program, 62% of the students indicated that they felt safe at school. A survey taken subsequently showed 92% of the kids felt safe at school.
On the last day of the Week of Action, students gathered in a circle of silence and vowed to no longer be bystanders, but to take action in the future.
From this point forward, we will break our silence and stand up, and we will say, "Not in our town."
The positive results of the anti-bullying program inspired the mayor to get the whole community involved.
A lot of businesses put money towards the program, so that they could build this program up. We have to stand together as a community, and I see it's growing, that without that stand, we can't make a change.
The community then gathered to understand the devastating consequences of bullying, and to support the students trying to make a change.
We do this so that it never happens to you, and so that it never happens to the people that you know.
Somehow, you've done something that made schools safe. This is Lori Masari, who is responsible for starting this movement that has grown faster than anything we have ever seen in the Antelope Valley.
Look around you, do you see anyone who just might be invisible too?
Allow your mind to be changed, and forever understand your power and the impact you have on the lives around you. Will you join our fight to end school bullying?
Not in our town.
It is better to light just one little candle and to summer in the dark. Better far than to light just one little candle, all you need's a tiny spark. If we all say a prayer that the world will be free, the wonder of a new day we'd see. And if everyone will, just one little candle, whatever world this will be, whatever world
Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, we have to do another LPAC event. Well, we don't have to have a funeral. I don't know. I'm sure that Mr. Pezegian will get together with you next week, and we will figure out an event. I mean, it's just too cool of a thing to let, you know... I mean, it's got to be celebrated every year, all right? Let's do it. Okay, thank you. Should we break for five minutes and let people who want to leave, leave, and then we'll start back up? That might be the best way to do it. Okay, we're back on. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendars consist of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the agency or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda or non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Chairman Crist, I'm turning the meeting over to you on the redevelopment agency.
Do we have a motion and a second for the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Do we have any speaker cards? No, we do not. Let's vote. I pressed mine twice.
All right, let's try that again.
Let's do it again.
Ron, it's not working tonight.
Aye. Let's take a oral vote. Just raise your hands. We have four with Cassandra's abstaining. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris at this time.
Who once again reminds staff that if they had an apple, this wouldn't happen. All right. Power Authority actions. Are there any items on the Power Authority Consent Calendar you should pull for discussion, or do you have a motion or a second for adoption of the Power Authority Consent Calendar?
We have one speaker card on Consent Calendar number one.
All right, let's just do them one at a time then. Michael Reeves, this is PA, item number one.
Mayor Paris, future colleagues on the council. Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose the CC-1, which is a two-year optioned lease agreement and a twenty-year ground lease agreement with U.S. Topco Energy. And to keep things brief, I also oppose PA-CC-2, so you don't have to see me twice up here. You know, remember when Palmdale was discussing the power plant? One of our concerns was the soccer fields, that the pollutants from the Palmdale plant were going to go over to soccer fields in Lancaster, if everybody remembers that. And fortunately, nothing's happened with the power plant. We don't have to worry about that. But here we are, going to put energy plants right next to the soccer fields. Silicone dust is given off in the manufacture of panels. So we have panels being installed. We're not positive about the effects of those panels on children playing in the soccer fields. It's not a definite thing. Do we want to take the risk and expose children to silicone dust?
Mr. Reeves, I have a question for you. You're aware these are solar?
I'm sorry?
You're aware that these are solar fields?
Yeah, the soccer fields, right. I'm worried about the soccer-
We're talking, when you're making the analogy of the Palmdale power plant and its pollutants, and you're comparing it with solar?
Yeah, I'm making an analysis, Councilor-
Hey, that was my question.
Chris, we're going to have pollutants from the solar energy plants, just like we're going to have it from the power plant if it's ever built. I mean, there's got to be something... Silicone dust is used in the manufacture of the solar panels. We don't know the effects. Do you want to expose children? Do you want to even think that they're exposed to it? Just like the pollutants that Palmdale wanted to expose us to from the steam plant. I mean, if you want to promote Topco and solar energy, it's more economical to use panels. If they want to construct panels on individual houses and people want to purchase them, that's fine. That's more efficient. But to use all this land on a twenty-year lease, I don't agree with it. I think that this needs to go back to the drawing board and be reworked. Just not only on the silicone dust, but also because-
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
It's the twenty-year ground lease. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move that we adopt PA-CC-1.
I'll second that.
Let's try to vote again. It's not working. Maybe it's a sign about the vice mayor.
It worked an hour ago. Maybe you can just ask if there's any objections.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Moving on to PA-CC-2, no speaker cards. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes of the council financing, housing, and power authority minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Any items on the consent calendar you'd like to pull for discussion? Mr. Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking about CC-9, the approval of the appropriation expenditure of $305,000 for engineering purchase and installation of an emergency generator at Lancaster City Hall. And I want to applaud the staff for doing this. I think this is one of the most important things I've heard in a long time, that we will have a city hall that will be functional in the midst of a disaster, unlike Pasadena's city hall that went out because they didn't have any power recently when the winds. During the coming months, I'm going to come up with a disaster plan for the Antelope Valley in the event because of the economic crisis that we have in this country, and also because we're right near an earthquake fault. And I applaud the city government for taking this step, and I hope that in the event that the sheriff's department doesn't have the same facility, that we can share it with them in the event of an emergency. And good work, staff.
Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves, Mr. Fuller in the back, if you'd like to contact him. Mr. Fuller, does the Community Emergency Response Team, for CERT, if you'd like to work with him? That's what he does, so-
I will contact him. Thanks.
He's in the back. Mr. Fuller, you'd like to raise your hand, so you can see him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Moving on to the public hearings. Public hearing item number one. Let's hear the staff report from Mr. Ludiki.
Mayor Paris and members of the city council. This evening, the council will consider adoption of the City of Lancaster Master Plan of Trails and Bike Ways. The creation of this plan has included collaborative partnerships, significant public outreach, and involvement from many different stakeholders, which you will hear about from some other speakers. The plan itself is a comprehensive approach to providing pedestrian, bicycle, and equestrian facilities in our city, and you will also hear about that. But the most important thing about this plan is the transformation that it will help to create. I want you to think for a moment about the changes to the Boulevard, how by creating a place that's comfortable for people, we have positively changed the downtown business climate and the way our citizens feel about their community. I see it when people walk their neighbors downtown who have not been there and show them what is happening. This plan that is before you will carry that same approach into every area of our city and will change the way that we plan for our future growth. In doing so, it will foster a livable city that is healthy, safe, economically viable, and sustainable. Because when you create places that people care about, they will defend and nurture them. The development of this plan has been directed by the city's Architectural and Design Planning Commission. April Bartlett, chairperson of the commission, is here to give you an overview of this process.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, city council members. Tonight, I'm asking for your consideration to adopt the Master Plan of Trails and Bike Ways. In June of 2010, the City of Lancaster was awarded a grant from the L.A. County Department of Public Health's Renewing Environments for Nutrition, Exercise, and Wellness Program to develop a Master Plan of Trails and Bike Ways. This policy document guides the development of a comprehensive trail, bikeway, and walkway network that encourages a healthy and sustainable lifestyle for our citizens. The development of the Master Plan was a collaborative effort for which I'd like to thank several groups. L.A. County Department of Public Health Project Director Suzanne Bogart and staff; Antelope Valley Partners for Health, Michelle Kiefer and staff; Architectural and Design Commission members, Vice Chair Drew Mercy, Commissioners Courtney Stallworth, Sandra Persley, Timothy Wiley, and Amanda Haas; Technical Advisory Commission, Mark Bryant, Bob Turner, Pam Holland, Elaine McDonald, Wes Little, Mark Marshall, Candace Rudolph, Scott Smith, David Sinclair, and Deputy John White; Consultants Ryan Snyder and staff, Dan Burden, and the staff from Hoagland Ireland; and a very special thank you to Sylvia Donovan, Elma Watson, Brenda Gemlousky, Brian Ludiki, Calvin Tana Tongo, Craig Earl, Mario Enriquez, Ray Hunt, Michelle Cantrell, Justin Patanian, Mike Rosa, Carla Workman, and all of the city's staff for their exceptional work and commitment to the Master Plan of Trails and Bike Ways. There was extensive public outreach during the development of the Master Plan with walk audits and workshops. I'd like to thank the community groups and interested parties, Mark Pezegian, Joe Cabral, and staff for their participation in this enormous effort. The Master Plan of Trails and Bike Ways is a comprehensive citywide plan. The Architectural and Design Commission split the draft plan into three sections and worked in pairs to review the document. Commissioners Stallworth and Persley reviewed the pedestrian section; Commissioners Haas and Vice Chair Mercy reviewed the trails section; and Commissioners Wiley and myself reviewed the cycling section. After our review, the review of public comments, response to questions posed to city staff, and discussion among the commissioners, the commission made a few minor adjustments to the draft plan that is before you now. The Master Plan includes a list of goals, policies, and actions, which is a comprehensive blueprint by which the city can become more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly and economically viable. Some of the goals are to provide a safe, connected, and convenient street environment; to create a network of off-street shared-use paths; to provide amenities and facilities to increase bicycling and walking; to provide opportunities to bicycle and walk for commuting; to support safe access to and from schools; and to develop routes and facilities to enhance the economic viability of Lancaster. I'd now like to introduce Ryan Snyder, who will present a short overview of the Master Plan. Ryan Snyder is a new urbanist transportation planner specializing in smart growth, bicycle and pedestrian planning, and safe routes to school planning. He is a Federal Highway Administration Pedestrian Safety Design Instructor and has been involved in lawmaking at the state level and ordinance drafting at the local level.
Thank you, April. Good to see you. And what I'd like to do today is not go over all the fine details of the plan. We've got a real comprehensive plan with bikeways and trails and paths and pedestrian improvements and quite a few things of that nature that you'll see in the detailed thick document. But just to mention that we had... This is really a result of extensive public outreach. We did public workshops where people drew on maps. We did walk audits. We did special sessions with various groups. And really, it was very extensive, probably the most extensive public outreach plan I've ever been involved with. The benefits to this plan... This is a lot more than a bikeway and a pedestrian and trails plan. It will benefit pedestrians and horseback riders and bicyclists and others as they enjoy their experience riding, but it's much bigger than that. It really has larger benefits. For example, the economic development side of things. There's research that shows that real estate values increase near trails. There's research that shows that properties sell faster when there are trails nearby. We've already seen on Lancaster Boulevard the opening of new businesses by creating a pedestrian-friendly environment. This will create opportunities for Lancaster to bring in new businesses as it becomes known as a city where people can walk and bike and ride horses. We can stimulate tourism here, and particularly athletic tourism, as people want to come here to use the trails or even to train for triathlons and, you know, in conjunction with the National Soccer Center and all this. Lancaster could be known as a sports center, which would bring all sorts of other benefits. It also opens up the cities to get quite a few grants, not only for the trails and the bikeways and the pedestrian improvements, but for other things that grant funders, agencies, like to see that the city's doing. So think of a future where, you know, people can get on bike surries and ride on the paths and the place teeming with activity. And, you know, this sort of a downtown experience we're really starting to get on Lancaster Boulevard, but a pedestrian-friendly environment is a shopping environment. Benefits to health. Just having opportunities for physical activity and reducing the risk for chronic disease and an overall better quality of life. We do have health issues in the Antelope Valley here. Statistics show us that about twenty-three percent of children in middle school are obese, and about twenty-two percent of adults here are obese. About nearly nine percent of adults diagnosed with diabetes, and a quarter of adults with hypertension and cholesterol, and ten percent with a heart problem. So these are all health issues that can be addressed by people getting out and becoming more active. Children's health is very important as well. We want to encourage them to walk and bicycle to school. Those that do perform better academically and establish lifelong habits and become healthier, more productive citizens. Safety is a big issue as well. We've had quite a few pedestrian injuries and fatalities here. Twenty-three fatalities in a five-year period between 2005 and 2009. So we can address that with the pedestrian plan. And one of the things we'll do with the plan is sort of address speeding where there are pedestrians, because speeding really is a cause of, you know, more severe crashes and more crashes. Many of the devices we have recommended have research, and federal research, to show that they really increase safety. For example, sidewalks, about an eighty-eight percent crash reduction factor, and crossing lanes, about a forty percent reduction factor. Once we have more pedestrians out on the street, there's just safety in numbers. And more pedestrians put eyes on the street. So there's more safety from a personal safety and a crime perspective as well. Simply enjoyment. This is going to be enjoyable, to go out, ride a bike, take a hike, get on a horse, and, you know, however you want to enjoy these trailers. There's so many different ways. We're creating a whole network where people can go out and a network that's fine enough that there's something close to everybody's home. You don't have to go too far out of your way to find places you can enjoy. In many places, a parallel paved path for cyclists and people in rollerblades, as well as an earthen path for people that want to jog or equestrians. So the opportunities are really great for creating an enjoyable environment. And last, the environmental benefits. Obviously, fewer emissions. And really important to note that most walking and bicycle trips are short trips, and that's particularly- are short trips, and that's particularly important from a cold start perspective, because a cold start of a car is the most polluting of all. So, if we can convert some of those to bicycle or walking trips, that'll be a big benefit for air quality. And obviously, burning less energy can also be a benefit. So, with that, I will close and turn it over to Brian? Back to Brian?
Mayor Paris and members of the council, studies clearly show that the greatest factor
in determining whether people walk and bicycle is the environment that's created for them. This plan will do that for our city over the long term. If there are any questions that you have at this particular point, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I believe we probably do have speakers on this issue.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Hello, Mayor Paris, council members. Mr. Johnson, good to see you again. Last month, there was discussion on this planned trails and changing the path and the route to go up to K-8 as opposed to keeping a continuous path over the freeway on Avenue L. As someone who works out on the east side, north of Grumman out there at Plant 42, I try to commute once a week, and changing the path to divert it up to K-8 is a concern that I have. One is the lack of lighting over the freeway at K-8, and then once you get on that bike path that is paved, that walking multi-use path from K-8 to Sierra Highway, there's very little light on that section as well. And once you hit Sierra Highway, there's nowhere to cross to get onto the bike path on Sierra Highway that our city, the city of Palmdale, had put in. You'd have to go against the flow of traffic or play Frogger and get across Sierra Highway, which brings its own level of safety risk. Maintaining a continuity of travel down Avenue L, Avenue L is a major thoroughfare for our city, and there's big bike lanes on that stretch heading east and west. And to maintain it over the freeway to 10th Street and then continuing out to the east side, I feel would be a safer and a better path for our community. When I was 15 years old, I was hit on 20th Street West between Avenue M and N. And as you know, that shoulder there is a broken-up white line of paint that goes between the sand and the road. There isn't a bike path there, but that's how I commuted to work, because there weren't bike paths in the city at the time, and that was the safest way from Palmdale to Lancaster. Because of that, I look at the safety of routing us up to K-8. It doesn't seem logical, and I've seen and heard of more accidents happening at intersections when cyclists have to make a left-hand turn. Let's say you're heading eastbound on L, you have to make a left-hand turn up to the Kaiser and onto K-8. There's a lot of indecision in motorists. They are in a bigger car, and it's difficult to see cyclists. But as a cyclist and a driver, I'd like to see the continuity of the path and the trail to go over the freeway on Avenue L. I know I got dinged, so thank you for your time, Mayor Paris. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for all the time you've put into this. You know, that group has really spent a lot of work on this, and we appreciate it.
Well, you get the assessor as well as me. My name is Suzanne Bogart. Good evening, Mayor Paris and council members. I am Director of Renew L.A. County and Obesity Prevention Initiative administered through the L.A. County Public Health Department. I want to personally thank you for making Los Angeles County, as well as the city of Lancaster, a better place to live, work, and play. I do have a disclaimer. I grew up in Pennsylvania, and you might know that we have a beautiful city called Lancaster. And so, I have practiced and practiced, but if I hesitate or if I don't say it correctly, you know why. On behalf of our federal funders, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, I am thrilled to be here tonight to see our vision of building healthier communities happening and in action right here in Lancaster. The hard work of your Renew team and your city staff are allowing us to make your environments healthier by creating a safer and more walkable and bikeable city. What surrounds us shapes us, and by making our streets more livable and accessible, many positive health outcomes can result. Ryan shared many of them that we at the Public Health Department are very interested in. With your commitment to living in complete streets, we can reduce motor vehicle crashes, which are the leading cause of death in children ages 1 through 14. We can reduce air pollution, which affects the lungs of our growing children, as well as complicates medical conditions in our county's elderly residents. We can increase physical activity and reduce the burden of type 2 diabetes, heart disease, as well as stroke, which account for 40% of our county residents early termination. Conditions in our physical environment exert powerful influences on individual health. Your city's dedication and the Renew initiative are working together to reform the norm and to make healthy choice the easy choice. We are glad that we could provide you with funding to support the master plan of trails and bikeways. However, most importantly, we are most appreciative that you could provide the residents of Lancaster a healthier and more enjoyable city in which to thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was good, wasn't it?
So do we.
That'll make her the head of the department. I mean, that's much better than we usually get. And now I'd like to call the person who sold me a bike and is responsible for me dropping 11 pounds, which I am inordinately proud of, and that would be Rich Bartlett. What's the name of the block?
Block Bikes.
What?
Block Bikes.
Block Bike?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought I'd give the plug.
Well, good evening. Thank you.
Sold me a bike rack, by the way. So, I don't get killed on Avenue L when I cross the freeway and drive to Sierra Highway to bike. Yeah, bike racks help, because you can't actually ride your bike all the way to the bike path on Sierra Highway.
I'm going to go as quick as I can, because I had a lot to cover, and I condensed it really hard. My name's Rich Bartlett. I'm a passionate cyclist, and I'm a resident of Lancaster. I've lived here my entire life. I ride a bicycle well over 12,000 miles a year. That averages about 32 miles a day, or about 2 hours and 20 minutes. I used to get paid to race a bicycle, and now I do it just because I love it, and it's been a passion and lifestyle of mine since I was a kid. We're all addicts to something, whether it be drugs, alcohol, work, or in this case, bikes. At least bike riding is physically healthy, or at least it should be. Bicycle awareness in the Antelope Valley leaves a lot to be desired. The current paths in town are best described as roads to nowhere. The city of Lancaster has hired a consulting company who laid out a plan that has the potential of making Lancaster one of the premier cycling cities in California. A couple of things were not taken into consideration, and unfortunately, some of the people who had the power to make the decisions on the bicycle routes had never ridden in Lancaster. So, many decisions were based primarily on finance rather than the well-being of the project. This past week, I was in Madison, Wisconsin, and they have one of the most elaborate trail systems with the worst weather, and they get used all year long. To win the race, you have to start. Madison did not establish their trail system overnight. I was raised, "Start hard, finish easy," and that's always been my plan of attack. It typically leads to "start hard, finish harder," but that's not the intention. I have found that if you choose the hardest task first, you can get it out of the way, and things become easier and more efficient as you move toward your goal. Marco Pantani, the 1998 Tour de France champion and the best mountain climber of all time, said, "The faster I finish, the faster it stops hurting." If we knock out the most difficult and most important jobs first, the rest will fall into place. Specifically, we need a bike path on Avenue L to connect 20th Street West with Sierra Highway and Division Street, the bike paths that are currently there. There's 100 arguments why not, all from people who have no intentions of ever using them or have ever ridden a bicycle in Lancaster. I personally have 100 reasons why we should build these bike lanes, but my two most important reasons why we should put these lanes in our human life. Sorry. Lisa Collins is living an assisted life right now. This is a woman who, sorry, this is hurting. This is a woman who is a physical trainer, and a physical trainer to hundreds of people that depended on her coaching, and she helped change their lives. Now, just a few months after a car ran into her on Avenue L, she depends on her family to take care of her on a daily basis. Our friend Nathan Rippey was killed, and his wife was severely injured when a car ran a red light and collided with another car on Division and Avenue L. This is a case of a driver talking on his cell phone and not paying attention in a hurry. The negligent driver took the life of a son, husband, and father of a special-needs daughter. He cannot be replaced at any cost. It's a tragedy, and if finance is going to be the argument, then we need to seriously evaluate the price of human life. It's my opinion that neither of these accidents would ever have happened if the bike lanes connected the two dead-end paths of Division Street and 20th Street West. Avenue L is a main artery connecting east and west and already has a number of bike paths leading to it. My main reasoning is that people would be more aware of cyclists, and with the entitlement of a bike path, we as cyclists are allowed to ride in the driver's minds. This is why I ask you to put the bike lane on Avenue L from 20th Street West to Sierra Highway and Division Street. Connect what we already have and make Lancaster a better place to ride. Protect me from people who drive like me. Many drivers, more aware of cyclists, are out there, the better off we're going to be. And for God's sakes, please don't let another family lose a loved one because of Avenue L. No amount of money or work is worth one more life. We need to educate the drivers and the cyclists of the laws of the road. Avenue L would be a great start. Thank you very much.
Well, this is an exciting time. I know that we've been anticipating this for the last few years. I was advocating some kind of master plan of trails when I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee in 2007, and then 2009, I remember meeting with Brian Ludicki and saying, "Okay, you know, we kind of talk about this generally in the master plan, but, you know, when are we going to actually see a master plan?" So, this is fantastic that we finally have come to this today. I grew up in Valencia, and for those that are familiar with that, they have a fantastic system of paseos there for biking and walking and multiple use. And I know for myself, when I lived down there, I would use those all the time for biking and walking and much more exercise. When I moved up here, we didn't have that, and I rarely go out for a walk. And now that I'm getting older, I need to walk even more, so I'm looking forward to having these trails in the city. I am wholeheartedly in support of the plan. I would just ask, and I apologize for not submitting this comment earlier. I meant to do that in writing earlier, and I apologize for not doing that. But I just wanted to ask your consideration of one minor change. On Policy 9, the fourth bullet point says, "Require new development to be designed with small blocks and have interconnected street networks, both internally and with adjacent development." And I know Ryan advocated a grid pattern for new development, and I understand that. I think it can work, and I think it's a great idea. But I think to require all new development to be in that same pattern, I think is, I think that's just being too, it's too micromanaging, I think, on new development, and I would like to see some broader language there with, rather than saying, "require new development to be designed with small blocks that have interconnected street networks," to rather say, "require new development to be designed with multi-use trails that interconnect." And I think that's more broader. That's really what we want, is we just want to see interconnecting trails, whether that's done with small blocks on a grid pattern, or we could have some development done that way, but if we have another developer that wants to do something more in line with what they do in Valencia with the cul-de-sacs and more of the, you know, curved walkways and pathways, I think that having more variety, I think, would add more to the value of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle Norton? Where'd Lyle go? Lyle left? His chance to come back and...
Mayor Paris, he actually spoke to me at the break and said he had a 6 o'clock appointment that his wife demanded he be at.
Well, that's certainly understandable.
However, he was in support of the plan.
Very smart man.
So, Suzanne, you know, the city's out of money because the state stole it all. Well, they did, didn't they?
Yep.
And, you know, I ride my bike on Pacific Coast Highway, but I won't ride it on Avenue L. It's too scary. I mean, it really is. There's got to be some money out there to make that safer. Will you help us out there?
To let you know that we were awarded a second-largest community transformation grant in the nation, and that money is now becoming encumbered, and with it will come another RFP. You were very successful at your last RFP of community transformation work through Renew L.A. County. I highly encourage you to continue your transformation work by applying through this RFP. I expect it to be out in late summer, but we are in close contact with your city staff, and they will be aware immediately when the RFP comes out.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Any discussion? Are we, talk to me about Avenue L and the freeway.
If it's council desire, we would certainly, we agree with a lot of the comments made. There are some significant safety challenges because of on-ramps and off-ramps, but if it's council desire, we will bring back something, probably through the budget process, that meets safety requirements. That's the desire of the council.
When we were in China, we saw the way they separate the bike path from the street, and we were talking about how that could work here. Are we, any further along?
Yeah, we're looking at that, and we have requirements we have to meet that are set by the federal government. One of them that's pretty exciting, and they've just approved, is to do different colors for bike lanes. It's a very, I don't know what chartreuse is, but it's a very bright green that it really stands out.
We want to be careful. You know how we are about colors up here.
I know. I don't even know if chartreuse is the right one. It's a very bright green. And what the idea is now, and we're also, our traffic engineering section is also looking at what we saw in China, which is a higher barrier to differentiate bike lanes from people. So, yeah, we're looking at that. We also plan in the next budget to bring back to you some of these projects funded, depending on, you know, funds that we have. So, this is very exciting for the city, and we really want to do this in a big way, as Rich said.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And Rich, you're still working on the bicycle race, right? You know, we've had go-kart races, now maybe we could have a bicycle race, and I might actually get through that race. Great. Your motion?
Well, one question also, on the, what Mr., one of the other speakers brought up, about saying that we require that. I know a lot of times when we're developing the general plan, that we don't use the word "require," that we actually use the word like "encourage" and those things. So, why is this, you know, because sometimes we become too onerous, and then when we have a low development now, but then when development starts taking off, we're going to go, "Okay, well, wait a minute, what are we doing here?" So, maybe we can talk about that.
Yes. The intent of the policy is really to make sure that as development occurs, we don't create situations where we cut off huge amounts of access. You can achieve that through multi-use trails and other sorts of things like that, as Mr. Sinclair was saying, and we would certainly, you know, allow that for any developer who wanted to approach that. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the connectedness between that project, other projects, and other parts of the city is what we maintain.
Okay. Is there still some flexibility, like in a lot of the things that we have, that we have requirement that at a staff level, a director's review, you can say?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to, okay, as long as we have that flexibility still, we don't want to paint ourselves in a corner?
Yes.
Okay.
And then before we call for the question...
And then before we call for the question, so what I'm hearing is that there's still an opening to correct Avenue L and...
Well, Avenue L is a problem in that we do have on-ramps and off-ramps, and so it's, you know, we've got to really look at the statistics on accidents at those places. But so far, we haven't had accidents there. We've had them elsewhere. But April calls me, you know, far too often during...on weekends, telling me of the latest fatality, and it seems to revolve around Avenue L. I mean, the last few calls, that's what they've been. So, you know, it seems to me we have to do something.
How many fatalities have we had on Avenue L or that area?
Two and one major injury.
We hear loud and clear, and that was discussed a lot in the...before the Architectural Design Commission and by the public, so we will come back with something. It's just, I just want to be honest, it's a big challenge for the reasons the mayor said.
Question for you, Mr. Mayor, also, but if did the Architectural Design Committee look at Avenue L, and then why wasn't that recommended, and why wasn't staff...I mean, what...how did we get to this point that we have some people...or we're saying some people say yes and some people say no? So what's the history on that?
Because it's a difficult problem. I mean, they certainly looked at it, they certainly discussed it, but it's a difficult problem.
Right.
And what it is, it's a problem we have to find a solution for, and right now, we don't have that solution. But we...but, I mean, when you look at all the problems we've resolved in the city, it ought to be not that difficult.
I mean, there must have been some kind of reasoning that staff didn't recommend it. I'm just wondering, why didn't they recommend it?
Because of the on-ramp and off-ramp.
Off-ramp, because of that, because of that transportation stuff. Just...
It's a problem.
Right. Is it something that you would block it off from bicycle traffic? I mean, I used to be a cyclist, and there's some places you weren't allowed to ride because it was too dangerous. Is that one of those places where you just block it off and say, "No bicycle traffic at all"? I'm not sure.
If you view it as recreation, I think that that's probably accurate, but if you view it as a way of mode of transportation, then it's not accurate, because what we have to do is we have to make the bike paths and the destination easy and accessible.
Correct.
And when you don't do that, people get in the car. I mean, there's competing influences there. If you make them go up and around K-8, we lose riders, and the goal is to get people riding, to get people moving.
Right.
Especially with the mortality rate in this city.
All right, if they can come up with a good solution that makes it safe and gets over that, then that's a creative way, that's...
What they say is they can do it, so let them do it.
If I may. Rich, thank you for your story that you shared with us. I wanted to ask you, too, with the years of experience that you've had on bicycle riding in the community and outside of the community, have you noticed any bicycle lanes on the off-ramp and on-ramps, and have you seen any problems, or have you seen bikes just going across it in a friendly manner, and vehicles being aware of it, signs up, lights flashing, things...
We're known as a mode of transportation when the bike lane's there, but you take the bike lane away, and the law is for the automobiles and the bikes, is for a bicycle rider to be to the far...as far to the right as is safe. So it's a gray area. The car is saying, "You're too far out." The bike's saying, "I want more of the lane." There's no...no one's right. So when you put the bike lane in there, you've created an awareness, and then you get merging traffic. Like you were saying, in China, they have roundabouts, they have intersections with zero lights, and everything flows, and nobody ever stops because people are aware of each other. And that's what we need, is for the cars to know that the bikes are allowed there. As I ride down, you end on Avenue L at 20th Street of a bike lane, and you have this tiny little shoulder to get all the way up to Sierra Highway. And at that point, the cars feel that you are not entitled to that, and you don't...you shouldn't even be there. And that's...with that in mind, I mean, we legally have just as much right. And I'm not one to say, "Oh, I have the right, so I'm going to take that lane." I'm not going to put my life at danger, but people will cut you off and make drastic movements just to prove to you that you shouldn't be there, and it just doesn't make any sense. Down in LA, we do a lot of riding. I've traveled all over. It's just making things merge properly, and you've got to start it early because you can't make a drastic move. If you look at the freeway off-ramp going into Costco, that's one of the sketchiest things in town for an automobile, let alone a bicycle. So like you were saying, it's a challenge. It's absolutely a challenge. But when you look at the alternatives, there's a lot of people that want to commute to the aircraft. There's a lot of people that want to circumnavigate town for their jobs, people that work on the east side of Lancaster, people that work on the Boulevard, if you're a west-side resident. There's no way to get end to end, and when you do get to K-8, it's going to cost as much to build whatever structure needs to be built there, whether it be a light, a bridge, a tunnel, whatever needs to be put in there, as it will to put paint on the road and signs. So it's...I think cost-wise, no matter what you do, it's going to be the same amount of money spent. But if you can keep everything flowing and have more people utilizing it, as you were saying, it's not a problem. And when you get into that high-traffic area and we get those...the paint down...Portland, Oregon, is...you can look on the bike maps. Madison, where I was just this last week, they have a website dedicated purely to their bike lanes, and there's hundreds, probably thousands of miles of bike lane, and it all runs parallel, all runs in conjunction.
That's interesting.
Rich, they got 45,000 college kids at Madison.
Hopefully, we will soon.
But it's the most adverse, and if they can do it, there's no reason we can't. We have a lot more people, so...
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept PH 1, adopt Resolution Number 12-02.
I second.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry, there's somebody with a speaker card that's...
Oh, yes.
Come on up, and I don't have your name, so if you could introduce yourself, we could go forward. Lyle Norton. Or you could be Lyle Norton.
Okay. Mayor Paris and Council. My name is Michelle Chavez, and I represent the High Desert Cyclists and the LA CBC, the LA County Bicycle Coalition. And I ride mostly in the city of Lancaster for transportation reasons. Well, first of all, I started riding because of my problem with obesity, and then I decided that I wanted to not contribute to pollution and to climate change, so I ride almost every day. And the only reason I drove here by car is I found out about the meeting rather late. But my concern also was Avenue L. I rode over the Avenue L overpass two days after Lisa Collins was hit, and it was just by coincidence because I had to go to Costco, and then I had to cross the freeway to get over to the west side. And it was so scary. I think the speed limit there is 45 to 50, and the...when you have the exits for the freeway, you have to cross that as a cyclist. You have to cross over it to get into the lane you need to merge in to go straight. Otherwise, you're going to end up on the freeway, and bikes aren't allowed on the freeway. And it's very, very scary. I had to actually stop and wait for several minutes for all the cars that were speeding towards me to go past before I could proceed. And I could see, you know, why it's very, very dangerous there. And I believe that there should be bicycle lanes, at the very least, protected lanes would be wonderful, separated lanes across that freeway and continuing on to the Sierra Highway Bike Path. And I concur with everybody else about K-8. We rode that this weekend with our bike group, and we all just ran across highway very fast to get over to the lanes from the K-8 path, which, by the way, the K-8 path is not very well-maintained. It's paved, but there are portions of it that are covered with dirt and debris, and so that would have to be significantly improved, I believe, as well as lights being added for nighttime to make it a safer passage to the Sierra Highway Bike Path. But my major concern is Avenue L and the fact that there are bike lanes on both sides of those areas, but that particular portion is not provided for and not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all know where she means.
Yes.
So I'll restate my motion, adopt Resolution Number 12-02.
And do we have a...excuse me, but do we have a deadline as to when the city's going to have a plan in place for the Avenue L situation?
We would do it through...I don't...I would like to talk traffic engineering to see, but we would do it through the budget process, next three, four months.
Okay. So six months from now, we should have something?
Yes, and I concur with you on the whole grant thing. I heard that we would compete exceptionally well for the money to build it.
Great. And April will remind us in six months? Okay, good. All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. And I would, at this time, like to formally challenge Mayor Ledford to a bicycle race from Lancaster to Palmdale and back. It's on the agenda. I think that's so much more civilized than a boxing match, don't you? All right. PH, item two.
There's no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
You want to wave the public comment?
Yes.
I mean, the presentation? All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 12-03.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes.
Speaker cards for Michael Reeves and the next three new business items.
And we now have new business item one. Michael Reeves.
I thought that the chairman of the sanitation district would be here tonight, so...
He's getting ready for the bicycle race.
If you don't mind, I would like to...I would like to compliment Vice Mayor Smith for holding the line on the sanitation district rate. It's due to his efforts that our rates aren't higher than they are, and I appreciate it. And I would like to also commend him for trying to get the meetings held in Lancaster so the citizens can attend the meetings. It's not possible for most of us to go down to Whittier and see the meetings, so whatever you do. But on a personal level, if we all remember, the sanitation people said that we're going to charge you big, high rates, the highest rates possible, and at the end of the year, you can apply for a rebate. So as a citizen of Lancaster, I got my water bill for the last three years, and I got an application from 14th District Sanitation District. And mind you, I'm a single guy, I have three caps, I don't use a lot of water, I'm very frugal, you know? If I'm in a room, I cut off the light. If I use the water, I cut off the water. And my friends at the sanitation district, they send you three letters, one letter for each year. So on one year, they said the max is like 123, and you used 191. Another year, okay, you used 123, 165, the max is 123. The max is 123, you use 206. I mean, this is sort of ridiculous, that, I mean, the citizens of this town are having to pay exorbitant fees for the sanitation district. Is there anything we can do to reduce these rates, or maybe form our own sanitation district or something to stop this nonsense? Otherwise, I understand that the rates are going to go up to 360, 385 next year. So thank you, Vice Mayor Smith. And Council, I hope that we do something about the sanitation district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. We did extend an invitation to Mayor Ledford, who's chairman of the sanitation district for the city of Lancaster. It's even hard to say, but he has declined to come talk to us. The county assessor will come talk to us, the Department of Health will come talk to us, the fire department will come talk to us, but the chairman of the sanitation district refused. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. We'll continue on our quest to deal with the sanitation district problem. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Correct, yeah. We're going through a study, you know, the fees right at this time are high, you know, for the past four or five years, they've gone up about 110% because of the new plant that was being built, and there's a whole history behind that, but we're trying to get a handle on it, see if we can manage it differently, and see if we can at least get to about 2015 when the bonds are callable and see if we can refinance, but it is quite a quidmire.
You know, unfortunately, the newspaper is focusing on the rift between the two mayors, and what they're missing is that the citizens of this city are going to have to end up paying a lot more money if we don't get a handle on how this sanitation district is being run. And it is essentially being run by those outside of it, meaning the county and the city of Palmdale. And unless we restructure that so that we can chart our own destiny in regards to the sanitation district, it is going to cost every one of us a great deal of money that none of us have. I mean, be realistic, it's getting too expensive. Government's just getting too expensive, and this is getting ready to come down on us like a ton of bricks, and that's why we're spending so much energy talking about it and attempting to do something. I would like the city attorney to look into, perhaps there's some legislative resolution to restructuring that district or restructuring the voting block on that district that we can have our state senator and our state assemblyman present to the legislature. But it is intolerable, the way it is now, where we're being controlled by forces outside our own city.
Mayor Paris, also, too, again, I'm kind of disappointed that we didn't have somebody tonight from the sanitation district to speak to us, but it's no more different than the erroneous material that they've used. When they're using 30- and 40-year-old data to determine rates in today's world, that's the real frustrating part. And they started off picking on the, you know, the restaurants that are here in Anall Valley, and we don't know if we've got a resolve to that yet. The study is still taking place, but, you know, I...speaking out for small business, when a restaurant hands me a bill of $24,000 moving to $30,000, you know, that was another category where they were being slammed, and then when we found out that the data was over 30-some years old to arrive at the assessments...
1978.
Yeah, and so maybe there's some embarrassment there, maybe with the leader and, you know, the chairman's just...
I remember when we opened a restaurant, we had...my brother and I had $11,000, and we opened a restaurant.
Couldn't do that today. You couldn't even pay the sewer bill.
Sewer connection, you couldn't.
No wonder we're in such a strait. Okay, moving on. Robert Neal, new business item two.
We don't have a speaker card on NV2. We have them on NV3 and NV4.
Okay, let's wave the staff report. I know how much you wanted to speak, Robert. Is there a motion?
I'll move we introduce ordinance number 973.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. NV3 of...Dave McEwen.
Mayor Paris, city council members, I'm going to make a couple of brief comments before I turn over Dave on the successor agency, just to sort of let you folks and the public know where we're at on this redevelopment thing. This has been, from a personal standpoint for the management team here, has been one of the hardest weeks we've had at the city of Lancaster, because the state really made a mistake. We ranted and raved, and I've done my share, and everyone has done their share. They made a horrible mistake. They really took money from local communities to do economic development, housing, revitalization, jobs, and have put it up in Sacramento without a plan for it just because we need it. And the results of this aren't going to be known how bad this was until five years from now, when the next Lance Camper, instead of locating in California, is going to be in Indiana, and everyone will say, "Wow, we don't know why it is. California's so cool, why didn't they stay here?" Well, it's because of decisions like this and a business-friendly attitude. But with City of Lancaster, don't give up. We have a saying, "We don't give up." They haven't even begun to hit us hard enough yet, and we'll get through this. And over the next several months, we'll be working with you to get through that, and it will be a million-dollar, multimillion-dollar hit to the city. The decision by the Supreme Court was disappointing, but not a surprise. Anyone was paying attention could see where the Supreme Court was going, and we've made plans on that. You know, we're not depending on a legislative Hail Mary to save us. If that comes, that's great, but we... If that comes, that's great, but we have to plan as if AB 26, whether we agree with it or not, is the law of the land. That said, the first action before you to gain some measure of control over the dissolution of redevelopment is the successor agency asking the city council to become the successor agency, and Dave will explain that in a moment. At our next meeting, we will have actions before you dealing with the city recommendations, likely for the city to maintain housing functions and the assets to go with that, a final enforceable obligation schedule showing all the obligations of the former redevelopment agency, and establishing a redevelopment retirement trust fund, which is essentially the money that would be put in to pay for obligations of the former agency, like pass-throughs, bond payments, third-party agreements, et cetera. So that will be coming forth to you at your meeting on the 24th. The item before you today deals with the successor agency, and I will turn it over to city attorney Dave McEwen on that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you do have a series of actions that are going to be, need to be taken. The first of is to determine whether or not the city wants to act as the successor agency. And under the statute, the successor agency is defined as the city unless the city elects not to act as the city, as the successor agency. We have a resolution tonight which provides for the city council to elect to become the successor agency, and we think there are obviously some good reasons why you'd want to do that. Liabilities are limited to the amount of revenues that you receive, either from the transfer of real property or from tax increment, so there doesn't seem to be any exposure to the city as a result of that. Now, the existing redevelopment agency will, unless there's some movement in the legislature, and there are a couple of bills pending now, that might extend the date, but as of tonight, the current redevelopment agency will cease to exist on February 1st. And all of the assets of the redevelopment agency, other than the housing assets, will be transferred by operation of law to the successor agency. And then it's the obligation of the successor agency to dispose of those assets as judiciously as possible, with the idea of preserving the value in that process. So they want to maximize the revenues, and they want you to get rid of it as expeditiously as you possibly can. There's no set time limit in which you have to do that. This is obviously not a great real estate market to be dumping a lot of properties on the market, so it'll be a matter of timing. We'll also be able to control, probably a little better than an outside agency would, who might get the property, how it might be used after it's sold, subject to, you know, the limitations of the act that, you know, we can't provide any assistance, all we can do is just market the property. So, but we think we can actually have some input in how the property gets developed, maybe beyond just the zoning laws that would be applicable to that. But that's something that we'll address later. If you choose not to be the successor agency, then it goes to the first local entity that steps up and wants to volunteer to be the successor agency. And if no one steps up, then the governor gets to appoint who the successor agency would be. The successor agency, let me follow up some more on what it can and can't do, all of its actions are subject to approval by an oversight board. And there is created by the statute, an oversight board for every redevelopment agency in the state. And those oversight boards remain in effect for, I think, roughly five, four and a half years now, until 2016. And then there becomes one oversight board for the entire county, for every redevelopment agency within the county. The oversight board will be made up of a number of people. The board of supervisors get to appoint members, the mayor gets to appoint a member, the superintendent of community colleges gets to appoint a member, there's a member from the school districts, and then the largest taxing entity, which we believe would be the fire district, also gets to appoint one. And there's also a former employee of a represented group can be appointed to the group as well, to the board. So there's a lot of, and that gets created by May 1st. So in the next couple of months, there'll be a lot of movement in terms of who gets appointed to that board, and we'll want to have as much input as we possibly can in The one specific issue applicable to Lancaster is that we currently have two members of the redevelopment agency who were appointed because two members of the city council chose to step down from their duties as the redevelopment agency members for various conflict reasons. There is no provision in the law for the appointment of anybody other than the city council if the city chooses to act as the successor agency. But there also are not the special conflict of interest rules applicable to the redevelopment agency. Those are no longer applicable to the successor agency. So you're back to simply the Fair Political Practices Act, and then Government Code, Section 1090, which apply to every action you take as a council member. I don't know if there's anything else I could clarify, I'd be happy to answer questions.
It specifically says the council has to be the successor agency?
It defines it as the city.
So why is that the city council?
Well, because the city council represents the city. They're the elected representatives of the city.
I know that part.
You can only act as the city through the city council.
I don't know that that's accurate. I mean, we represent the city through the planning commission, we have all kinds of...
But they're specifically charged with that duty under the planning laws. Other than that, it goes back to the city council.
I'm just not convinced. I would like to see a memorandum addressing that issue, as to why saying the city means the city council.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. One of the things I'm concerned about is, there may or not be a technical conflict, but I do have property within the confines of the redevelopment agency that would be affected, and so if I could avoid that conflict, I want to.
Right, I understand the problem. With respect to the conflict, what would be required as we go forward in disposing of the real property is that if one of those properties was located within, I think, 300 feet of your property in the project areas, that you would have to disqualify yourself from participation, but that's the only rule that would be applicable. And, well, the other one would be 1090 requirement that you not have a financial interest in any contract entered into by the city council.
What I'm specifically asking you to address is why we can't have a commission that represents the council in regards to the successor agency.
Okay.
And if there isn't a prohibition on it, I just, I mean, my understanding of the law is that that would be appropriate. It doesn't specify city council. I mean, we have all types of different agency relationships where people are representing the city based upon us saying they should. I mean, why can't I put that into, have an agent do it?
Well, okay, we're operating under state law right now, and specifically in accordance with those very specific provisions of state law.
It's an easy question.
I understand it's a question.
Does the word "city" mean city council?
Yes.
It's a simple question.
Okay.
And there's...
And I've given you my tentative answer on that, and I'll prepare a memo.
But what I'm not asking you for is judicial opinion, I'm asking you for a legal opinion as to what do the cases say, what does the statute say, what is the law regarding that?
I know how to write the opinion.
Thank you. But you're not the arbiter of it.
I understand.
All right, thank you. When do we have to act?
Tonight.
We would suggest you act tonight, as there's a law on that says...
You have to act by Friday. Sorry, I didn't make up that date.
You also didn't give us enough time to be prepared to make a decision, did you?
The decision timing was not my timing. The decision timing was imposed by the State Supreme Court.
You're asking us to make a decision without sufficient preparation, and that is not something that I should see a smirk about.
I don't interpret any expression as a smirk.
Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution number 12-04.
I'll second that motion.
Just one comment, if we do adopt that, that doesn't mean that the city council cannot, you know, if it comes out the way you say, we can do...
Yeah, I was going to add that, too, that that's absolutely the case, that by adopting this, if there's a way to create a commission to do what the state law requires, then we'll designate that commission.
Correct.
Yeah, so we just created the agency at this point.
We're just going to take it rather than somebody else.
You know, I feel like we take three steps back for every step forward we take. All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Vice Mayor Smith, I had a speaker card.
That's right, you did. Come on up.
I took the opportunity to read the decision of the State Supreme Court, and I found it very lucid and very clear on what they wanted. I favor the city taking over as the successor agency. I believe that the city council is the successor agency, but the problem is that we had two members of the council who disqualified themselves from the redevelopment commission, and now we're going to be asked whether they can sit on the successor agency, and according to what we heard, there's no stipulation that they can't. But in the interest of, you know, appearing improper, I think that the two members, the Mayor Paris and council member Johnson, should not be on the successor agency, and that there should not be appointees, that the remaining council people should be the successor agency, until which time we have new council people to fill that position. I want to make one other comment, too. I don't know who the attorney was for the League of California Cities, but I've never heard of a, well, maybe there is a case where attorney goes to court and argues against himself, and that's exactly what the attorney did in this situation. We spent $15,000, $20,000 of city money supporting the League of California Cities and their lawsuit, and the attorney who argued it argued against himself, and we blew ourselves up, as it was quoted. We quoted Proposition 22 that protects us from being raided, and then we favored AB 27, which allowed the exact same thing, and the court struck it down. So in summary, I favor the city being, the city council being successor agency, but I don't think that Mayor Paris, the council member Johnson, should be on the successor agency for the appearance. I'm not accusing them of anything, you know, I'm just saying for the sense of propriety, let's don't get into it, because I know that there's probably going to be lawsuits coming out of the woodwork on this whole thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mr. McEwen a question, maybe he can clarify it for Mr. Reeves here, is that the successor agency is not a redevelopment agency, and its task is very specific. And the reason why certain members of any council might recuse themselves or step down is because the actions of that redevelopment agency could enhance their financial position. The successor agency will not be doing that, so we're just in the position of basically property sale and taking care of the administrative costs, is that correct?
That's correct.
You understand my...
I absolutely do, I'm on board with you, trust me. There is a way to avoid all council members doing it.
That's not just the issue. The issue is, is we're now at a place where we have a diverse, vibrant group of people leading the city. And now, what I'm being told is I got to narrow it back down, and I don't like it. I don't like it at all. I think that one of the reasons this city is thriving is because we have opened the doors to everyone, that we have almost the same number of women as we do men, we have, we're racially diverse, we're economically diverse, we're taking those words and turning them into something that have meaning and have value and result in vibrancy. And I don't like narrowing this table down at all. And I guess that's what I'm so angry about, is, you know, we're taking steps backwards instead of forwards.
I appreciate the reasons for the comments. One thing to keep in mind is that we have another action coming at the next meeting in which the council will determine whether or not to assume the obligations, duties, assets of the housing functions of the redevelopment agency. And one of, without letting the cat out of the bag too much, one of the possibilities is that rather than have the city assume those functions, is that we have the Lancaster Housing Authority assume those functions. And there's an ongoing program that would continue, though it's grossly underfunded because we're required to transfer all of the revenues to the state, but we still have property assets that can be marketed and can be developed for purposes of providing housing. And that would provide a very good platform for the continued expansion of the members that make decisions with respect to that. The Housing Authority currently is designated, I think the city council is the Housing Authority, but there's also room on the Housing Authority to appoint other citizen members to serve on that board, and certainly the two members of the redevelopment agency that are not council members could be appointed to that position.
Just so long as everybody's clear, what I want is, I want real power in the hands of diverse people. I don't want the appearance. I want you to be able to control real dollars, to make real decisions, and what the state is doing is thwarting that effort, and I find that incredibly frustrating. But then maybe we should make the council seven seats.
Or we could have two members at large.
Oh. Ooh. I think we should, yeah, we're all at large, but we could go districts. We really should start thinking about it. I think that we're seeing the benefits of not being an old white men's club, and, you know, that's basically what the power of this valley has been. It's an old white man's club, and has been for 30 years. And once we broke away from those, and we broke those chains, look what's happening. I mean, look, I mean, we've got people coming in and redesigning our roads and doing it in a cooperative, beneficial, vibrant fashion. I mean, I think you guys like it, don't you? You know, we've never had that before. We're seeing real stuff happening. Okay, thank you. Did I, we vote? Let's vote again, because we didn't have the speaker card. Is there a motion?
I move again that we adopt resolution number 12-04.
Is there a second?
And I second that.
Let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously.
Mayor and city council, at your December 13th meeting, you authorized city staff to begin the formation of the California Clean Energy Authority, which intends to be a statewide agency of member agencies in other cities to expand and to develop our solar energy program. Before you tonight is an agreement between Solar City and the city of Lancaster to begin that effort. As you know, Solar City's been working diligently with city staff and other members of the community, including Lancaster School District and Eastside School District, for the development of solar panels, solar shade structures, very similar to what you see in city hall parking lot and other city facilities. Through this successful venture, we've created a model that we anticipate works for our sister agencies and sister cities throughout the state. The California Clean Energy Authority provides that framework to develop that plan, and the agreement before you today provides that framework between the city of Lancaster and the Solar City themselves. And what it entails is an agreement by which very similar merges and melds with the same relationship we had locally. locally, but expanding that on a statewide basis. And basically, that is, we will jointly market the program together, Solar City and the City of Lancaster. Solar City will do the construction and development of the facility, and the California Clean Energy Authority will partner with other cities in an effort to finance, fund, and operate these facilities statewide. It's our opportunity to further expand the moniker and the brand that Lancaster is the alternative energy capital of the world, as well as allow for economic development opportunities, job creation, and also a revenue stream for the City of Lancaster. So with that, if there's any questions on the specific details of the contract, I'd be happy to answer them, and we recommend that you approve the agreement tonight.
Any questions?
Jason, you've done an incredible job. I mean, you really have taken just an idea and turned it into something that is going to actually make lots of money for the City of Lancaster. That is huge. I can't tell you how happy I am that Mark found you.
Well, thank you. I get goosebumps and I get excited every day I come to work, and I think a lot of the people that are working on the project do too. I think we literally are changing the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Reeves. Now, after that, you have to be in favor of this, Michael.
I might as well just stay up here. I can, Mayor Perez, Council, ladies and gentlemen, staff, I can understand why we want to get involved with Solar City to increase our revenues, since the state is going to take revenues away from the redevelopment agency, and they're gonna probably try to raid the cities in the future. However, there's a few things about Solar City that disturbs me. In September 2011, they could not get a federal loan guarantee from the federal government because of the fiasco up in Northern California, which the administration was working with another company, and the company went under, and allegedly, the government lost half a billion dollars. That's a concern. I mean, who is Solar City? Another thing that disturbs me about this is that, because we're partnering with them, we can be sued, and we certainly don't need another lawsuit. And another thing that disturbs me that we're gonna issue bonds. We're gonna issue bonds with this agency that couldn't get a loan guarantee from the federal government. Here's a copy of the agreement that you're gonna vote on tonight. It's very complicated, very detailed, and before we vote on it, I think that we ought to go through it and explain to the public a little bit more about what we're getting into with Solar City before we okay it. And thank you for letting me speak, and this is the last time.
Tonight, right? Thank you, Michael. Is there a motion?
I'd like to say I'm very excited with Solar City. I think they've really taken the initiative to show the City of Lancaster what they can do for us, and I love that they are going to create jobs for our community, so.
And have been.
Yes.
Local jobs.
Yes.
Good. Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Solar City Corporation for the development of solar systems throughout the state of California.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. No action on the financing authority, no action on the housing authority. City Manager, any announcements?
No, sir. Oh, we have Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service this Saturday, and we had a great press conference at Antelope Valley High School. We had a former Palmdale High School running back sit in the Antelope Valley lopes seat, and actually represented the city very well, Mr. Christ, and I was proud to do so.
Was that because you lost the bet?
I didn't lose the bet.
Oh.
He did lose to Antelope Valley High School four years in a row, though.
Gollops.
That's not true. Well, in football.
Well, that's what we're talking about. I thought that's true. That's absolutely true.
When Marvin was in school, they didn't do well.
No, we did extremely well. We just didn't do extremely well on the varsity level.
They actually let you play varsity? Marvin played with my brother. That's why I'm able to talk to him that way. Mr. Paul. Oh, no, we gotta do the speaker card thing. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for any person who would like to address the City Council on any item that is not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respect the request that you fill the cards out.
I gotta go home and have my wife mad at me because I yelled at you. I'm sorry. I guess that's not my problem.
Okay.
That's it, I got your smile.
All right, we're back on.
The City Mayor, members of the council, the City Council Redevelopment Agency, met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9C to consider whether or not to initiate litigation on one case. There was a discussion, and no action was taken.
Thank you. City Attorney, any announcements?
No.
Oh, that was you. I'm thinking City Manager. Chairman Christ?
Redevelopment agency is now adjourned till January 24, 2012.
City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 24, 2012. Carol, my day is done, and please be gentle. We're done.